Two o'clock. All right, let's call the order of Sparks City Council meeting for Monday, October 28th, with a roll call.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Byby.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Duncan.
Here.
City Manager Luthen.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
All right. Today, you're going to be Pastor Dare.
Yes, sir.
Will you give us our invocation, please?
Please stand. Lord, we come to you and we just thank you for today. Lord, we thank you that we get to gather in your name. We pray for our nation, our state, and our cities across, really, truly, across the state. Lord, there's a lot of election going on, and we just pray you continue to guide it. Lord, we do pray for our first responders today. This is First Responders Day, and there's so much to be thankful for. So many men and women put their lives in the line of duty to go out there and support and be the first hands when everyone else gets to run away. But I pray that you continue to be with our decisions, with the things we face in the years to come. Let us be wise. In your name we pray. Amen.
Wes, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I will.
One feeling to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, we're on to a public comment. And I have Kathy Drake.
I think she wants to.
Oh, 11.1, sorry. My fault, I didn't read the number. All right, anyone in the public wishing to comment at this time? See none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Move on to agenda. I need, looking for an approval of the agenda or additions. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
I don't have a screen. Yeah, we could use verbal, if you want to move on.
Let's give it a minute.
Like three of us. Mine is, yeah, mine is out. Christopher's is on. Diane and, uh... Three of us on, three off.
These are the same three that went down last time.
Is it? There it is, okay. Because, yeah, I had everything else, but then it froze for...
Okay. Well, everybody's voted?
Almost.
I show, I got them all.
Anybody else broke?
All right. Any further discussion? Not, please vote. Motion carries.
Yes, I have on my screen.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Approval of the minutes, any additions, corrections? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Byby.
I move to approve the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for October 14th, 2024, as submitted.
Mr. Abbott beckon. You got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Announcements, boardrooms, and commissions, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a few to go through today. So, on 7.1, the Sparks Arts and Culture Advisory Committee has one vacancy for a term ending November 1st, 2026. The vacancy is for a performing arts representative. The applicants must be a Washoe County resident, have a full understanding of being an arts advocate, have five years or more experience as an arts advocate, be forward-thinking in programming of the arts, have prior experience on a nonprofit or government board. Applications for this position will be accepted until Friday, November 22nd, at 5:00 p.m. Item 7.2, Sparks Civil Service Commission, there is one vacancy here for a partial term ending June 30th, 2026. Commissioners must be Sparks residents and cannot be city employees or related to one within the third degree of consanguinity. I'm sure I messed that up.
That's a great word.
I went with it anyway. Applications will be accepted until Friday, November 15th, at 5:00 p.m. Seven, item 7.3, there is one vacancy on the Sparks Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board for a partial term ending June 30th, 2025. Applicants must reside in the City of Sparks, preferably in the ward of the appointing official. This vacancy is for a ward four appointee. Applications will be accepted until November 15th at 5:00 p.m. And lastly, for item 7.4, there are two vacancies on the Sparks Planning Commission, each for a four-year term ending December 31st, 2028. Applicants must be Sparks residents and registered to vote, and we will accept applications through Friday, November 22nd, at 5:00 p.m. Persons interested in serving on these committees should complete a survey, uh, community service, sorry, a community service application online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, consent items, anyone wishing to pull a consent item? Not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.4.
Mr. Dare.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. 9.1, consideration discussion of possible approval of the mayor's appointments to the Sparks Arts and Culture Advisory Committee from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order, and my choice was Melissa Nordine and Carol Quinn. Looking for a motion, or you can reject my suggestion. Mr. Abbott.
I move to appoint Carol Quinn as the Humanities Representative and Melissa Nordine as the Visual Arts Representative, each for a two-year term ending November 1st, 2026.
Ms. Byby.
I'll second their motion.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. 9.2, consideration discussion of possible approval of a major overhaul contract, AC-6075, with INIO-Jenbacher North American LLC for the rehabilitation of the congen- cogeneration system. Wow. Throwing all the big words at me today.
You sound like me.
Cogeneration system at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount not to exceed $586,392, with Spark's share being $183,951.17.
Kathy, Mayor Lawson, and members of council, for record, my name is Jerry Kegary, the Mayor's Manager of Park Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. This item is seeking approval for an agreement for major overhaul of contract, Sparks, INIO-Jenbacher North America, to rehabilitate the cogeneration system at Tom Wharf. The CoGen uses our biogas to produce 988 kilowatts of power, which reduces the power demand for our facility by approximately 25 to 30%. And it also contributes heat to our hot water loop that is used for process and building heating. The system was originally commissioned in 2016 with the manufactured service life of 60,000 operating hours. The runtime hours reached approximately 60,000 hours, and the CoGen is now due for the recommended overhaul. The overhaul consists of an engine block replacement, control system upgrades, and other improvements. The total cost for this project is $586,392, with the City of Sparks share being $183,951.17. And the overhaul is budgeted for fiscal year 25. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you giving us this information, talking about reducing the power usage through that by 25, 30%. What really catches my eye was the dollar amount. So, for this, as I understand, it's about $450,000 per year that it would be saving by having it running. So, pretty, pretty easy math to figure out in one year that it pays for the work that needs to be done on it. So, thank, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, not, I'm looking for a motion. Rabbit.
Move to approve the major overhaul contract, AC-6075, with INIO-Jenbacher North America LLC for the rehabilitation, the cogeneration system of the Tom Wharf facility, in an amount not to exceed $586,392, with Spark's share being $183,951.17.
Mr. Anderson.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jerry. 9.3, consideration discussion of possible approval of Amendment Number One to the Consulting Agreement, AC-5959, with Novota LLC, the City of Sparks, and the City of Reno, for rental of pilot testing equipment and limited technical support of the mobile organic biofilm pilot... Where is it? Where is it? Pilot project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility for an additional $108,000 to, and to extend the contract expiration date for a total agreement not to exceed $379,700, with Spark's share being $119,111.89.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Lawson and members of council. For the record, my name is Austin Martin, I'm the Treatment Plant Engineer for Tom Wharf, and I'm here to present on Agenda Items 9.03 through 9.05, which request the approval of three contract amendments related to the mobile organic biofilm project at Tom Wharf. Because each of these contracts and these agenda items encompass within the same project, I'd like to ask your permission to present on all three as a whole. Okay. And just as a reminder, at the end of the presentation, each of these agenda items will require a separate motion for approval. So, as many of you know, back in 2020, the facility went through a large facility plan where different alternatives were recommended for process intensification at the facility, basically meaning, what can we do with the existing infrastructure that we have without needing to expand? During those first three years, Tom Wharf underwent some small-scale pilot projects, and this mobile organic biofilm, the MOB project, is really the full-scale application that Tom Wharf selected. So, as a, as a quick reminder to some of you, and I know you've seen this before, but the MOB system is basically a milled canap, it's a cousin of the hibiscus family, milled down to a very specific grain size. And basically, all this does is, it provides a home for additional pollutant-treating microorganisms, allows us to do more treatment within the same basin where we're normally operating, basically accomplishing better nitrogen treatment more efficiently. The system is currently being operated in System Three of our facility, so there's three activated sludge systems at our facility. System Three is highlighted over there to the east. And passing the system, as you'll see, to the northeast are, as many of us have seen, our nitrification towers, converting that ammonia to nitrate. What we're trying to do is achieve that treatment step that would happen in the nitrification towers within the System Three. So, as a quick update for the facility and the overall system, back at the end of November in 2023 is when we actually implemented the system, and because we were implementing it close to winter, it took much longer than anticipated to get it to a steady state. And you see that they're reflected in the graph, the red line representing when we actually started the pilot, and the blue line representing our effluent ammonia concentration. And toward the end of January, start of February, is where we really started to see the system take off. With some additional improvements leading into the summer there, you can see that we've had exceptional performance at this, at the system, achieving pretty much a less than one milligram per liter of effluent ammonia, which was the pilot's goal. To reflect how this overall deals with the facility, this system takes on about 20% of our flow or 20% of our load, anywhere from six to seven million gallons a day. So, yes, it's a pilot, but is considered the second-largest wastewater system in northern Nevada, the first obviously being Tom Wharf. Many of you have seen this box and Whisker plot presented before by the Treatment Plant Manager. And what I'd like to highlight here is the blue dots, which represent our effluent total nitrogen concentrations for 2024 related to our historical performance. And as you can see, especially starting there in February, when the process really took off, we have had an exceptional year as far as nitrogen compliance. So, with the final phase of this pilot testing, and the purpose of the agenda items today is, Tom Wharf is requesting a six-month extension, which is sought to ultimately test the resiliency of the system during the wintertime during those cold temperatures. We also will be performing stress tests on the system, as well as looking to optimize it and reduce our overall methanol consumption at the facility, which already amounts to over $2 million a year just in methanol costs. So, the first agenda item, 9.3, relates to Novota, who is the manufacturer of the MOB system, and those costs are related to the equipment rental, as well as project support. 9.4 is with Jacobs Consultants, they are project experts and design engineers on this. Their costs are related to, again, project support and providing a final reporting. And then 9.5 is with UNR Board of Regents, consisting of Dr. Pergilla, Dr. Marchand, who are overseeing this project, providing analytical services and additional lab sampling for us. So, in conclusion, Tom Wharf is requesting the approval of the six-month contract extensions to terminate June 30th, 2025, for the associated dollar amounts reflected in each agenda item. Are there any questions?
Questions from the council?
Thank you. I mean, amazing success so quickly in a pilot project. So, you said it started November 2023.
Correct.
So, a year ago.
Yes.
And it was slated to end now or to end next summer? I'm just trying to get clear on the dates. You want a six-month extension from now or from next June?
From, would have been, I believe, December 1st of this year.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, six months from the expiration, which would be...
June 30th, 2025.
Oh, okay, through June 30, through 2025, okay.
Correct.
Perfect. And that will give you an idea, too, during the winter months. Is it more difficult during the winter months, or just different because of temperatures and everything else?
Yeah, exactly. Winter time is directly related to the water temperatures, and so as the water temperature cools, ultimately, it's more difficult for any wastewater biological treatment system to achieve the same performance.
Okay. You have a great results, thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Mr. Dare.
Yeah, one of the things I just think is important for anybody out there listening is that this potentially saves us taxpayers so much money because of things you have to do with the TROA, agreement with the river, these kind of things are crucial. And so, we, we vote on them, and we applaud, and we're excited, but this really turns into dollar savings, and it's pretty amazing. So, and I think at some point, it might be nice to, to kind of put the numbers out there of what we've saved by doing these kind of things, instead of doing the replacement that needed to be there. And I think if people understood that, I think they'd all be cheering a little bit more out of, out of their tax bucket. The other thing I'd like to know, the question is, let's say this goes six months, we do like what's there, is there an uplift cost going, or is this the regular cost? I know we're saying it's a pilot, but is there new machinery, is there new, all this stuff we're going to want to buy if this continues to go well?
That is correct. If we chose to go with this system as a full scale, we would need to apply it to all three of our basins. And with that, we would need additional screening material, potentially a new structure to house the, the screens, as they'll be much larger than we're currently operating at. We've been vetting through those with our consultants, I don't have those dollar amounts ready with us today, but ultimately, at the end of this project, that's what we will have ready.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, let's... Wood.
Is there such thing as, like, removing too much nitrogen? If we go full scale and we're at zero, is that bad? Do we need a little for the operation, or?
Um, I would, uh, you know, I would direct that question to our regulators, but ultimately, with the background concentrations of nitrogen, not just in the Truckee River, but with Steamboat Creek, I'm sure there's more than enough to be bioavailable to the microinvertebrate.
Understood. Good, awesome, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Not, I'm looking for a motion on 9.3 to start. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve Amendment Number One to the Consulting Agreement, AC-5959, with Novota LLC, City of Sparks, and City of Reno for rental of pilot testing equipment and limited technical support, the mobile or organic biofilm pilot project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility for an additional $108,000, and to extend the contract expiration date for a total agreement amount not to exceed $379,700, with Spark's share
Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to 9.4. I need to read this in, Madam Clerk. So, you can read it right back to me. Consideration discussion of possible approval of Amendment Number One to the Consulting Agreement, AC-5960s, with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., the City of Sparks, and the City of Reno, for pilot assistance services for the mobile organic biofilm project, pilot project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility for an additional $42,500, and to extend the contract expiration date for the total agreement not to exceed $239,746, with Spark's share being $75,208.32. Ms. Vanderwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Should have asked this during the first one. Is this in fiscal, our budget fiscal year 2024?
It was budgeted for fiscal year '24 and '25, if I have that correct.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
I move to approve Amendment Number One to the Consulting Agreement, AC-5960, with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., City of Sparks, City of Reno, for the pilot assistance services for the mobile organic biofilm pilot project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility for an additional $42,500, and to extend the contract expiration date for a total agreement amount not to exceed $239,746, with Spark's share being $75,208.32.
Ms. Byby.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. 9.5, consideration discussion of possible approval of Amendment Number One to the Agreement, AC-5966, with the University of Nevada Reno, City of Sparks, and the City of Reno, for investigation and modeling simulation services for the mobile organic biofilm pilot project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility for an additional $43,475, and to extend the contract expiration date for a total agreement not to exceed $193,087, with Spark's share being $60,571.39. Any discussion? Not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
No one wants to read all that? Is that what's going on?
No.
I move to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement, AC-5966, with the University of Nevada Reno, City of Sparks, and City of Reno, for the investigation and modeling simulation services for the mobile organic biofilm pilot project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility for an additional $43,475, and to extend the contract expiration date for a total agreement amount not to exceed $193,087, with Spark's share being
Mr. Rabbit.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Austin. Do you have 9.6, too?
Uh, I believe that is...
Nope.
Next one in line.
You don't want to talk about turf?
Wish I could. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, 9.6, consideration discussion of possible approval of a construct, construction contract, AC-6076, with SprintTurf LLC in the amount of $1,241,120 for the Golden Eagle Regional Park or Gert Fields, 10, 13, 14. Synthetic turf replacements, bid number 2425002PWP, hashtag WA-2024-520. There's a mouthful.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of council. Brandon Miles, Parks Development Coordinator. This item is for possible consideration of a construction contract with SprintTurf for the replacement of the outfields, as shown in red here on the vicinity map on Fields 10, 14, and 13. The infields of these three fields were replaced back in 2019 as part of a larger overall replacement plan that runs through 2028. Staff received four competitive bids as the result of the formal bidding process, with SprintTurf being the low bid at $1,241,120. That compares to an engineer's estimate of $1.67 million. Staff is recommending SprintTurf be awarded the contract in the amount of $1,241,120. Does council have any questions?
Questions from the council. Ms. Byby.
Yeah, um, well, first of all, first and foremost, I love the fact that we got 1.2 million for an engineer's estimate of 1.6. So, and the fact that we had four bids, I know a few years ago, we got one, I think, one year.
Yeah.
So, really seeing more companies that are in this space that are able to do the turf replacement for us, and the fact that we beat what the engineer's bid was, thank you very much for that. And really, so that the general public who might not realize, when we started replacing these fields, the staff out there at Golden Eagle, this is years ago, as we looked at an overwhelming amount of, all of a sudden, replacing all those fields at once wasn't feasible, and they came up, the staff that's working out there came up with the idea that on the fields, especially the softball fields, they, we didn't need to replace the whole field. So, as to your point in 2019, we did the infields, which got the highest amount of wear, now we're into the outfields. And so, it's been able to extend the cost, and we have been spending, actually, every year with marijuana money, we have used average of about a million dollars, about a million dollars a year on average for turf replacement. And am I correct in that this is rotating? So, all the fields you see there, when we finish these next year, you'll come back to us, and we'll have whatever's next in line. Because what, I guess, what would be the, the lifespan of the turf when it's there? I know flat field, infield, outfield are different, but an average lifespan before, and then the reason we have to replace it is for safety.
Yes.
The safety of all the sports that are playing out there every week throughout the whole year.
Yes, it seems the infields wear out faster, so we're able to get the outfields to last a fair amount longer. So, that's kind of the rotation that we've been going on, and, and these will be the first three outfields that we have replaced since the original install.
Oh, wow. Okay. Thank you. Good, good work, and an amazing, and obviously, the, the economic impact of Golden Eagle to this community is over 30 million, right? Over 30, over $30 million a year economic impact of the fields being used, teams coming in, 50,000 room nights, people staying in hotels, as well as all the youth sports and community sports. My grandson plays football out there, so...
My kids have played sports out there.
Yeah, yeah. So, awesome, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? The Grass for Grass program is working.
I was going to say that, but I'm...
I forgot, you forgot, but I'll help you. We use that marijuana money because it's, can't bond against it, so we just pay cash for new fields, and it's working out very well for us over the last, how many ever years, 10 years or so. Okay, with that, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Byby.
I move to approve a construction contract, AC-6076, with SpinTurf LLC in the amount of $1,241,120 for the Golden Eagle Regional Park, Fields 10, 13, 14, Outfields Synthetic Turf Replacement Project, bid number 24-25-002PWP, WA-2024-520.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. 9.7, consideration discussion of possible acceptance of fiscal year 2024, congressionally-directed economic development initiative community project, or CPF, funding, grant number B-24-CP-NV1513 in the amount of... or CPF Funding, grant number B-24-CP-NV-1513 in the amount of $1,372,000 for the rehabilitation of curb, gutter, sidewalk and driveway approaches in the residential community near Kate Smith Elementary School and direction to the city manager to execute the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Another mouthful.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Casey Chavla, an administrative analyst with your Community Services Department. And I'm before you today to present on the Economic Development Initiative Community Project Funding, and more specifically the Kate Smith Pedestrian Rehabilitation Project. In fiscal year 2024, sorry. In fiscal year 2024, the state of Nevada was appropriated $147 million to be awarded through two specific projects throughout the state through congressional-directed Economic Development Initiative Community Project Funding. CPF grants are administered through the Department of Housing and Urban Development and provide investments in a wide variety of projects such as housing, homelessness prevention, public facilities and other critical infrastructure and services. In February of 2023, city staff submitted several projects to be considered for the FY24 Congressional Directed Spending Appropriations. And in August of 2024, the city was notified that two projects had been selected, one of which being the Kate Smith Pedestrian Rehabilitation Project with an award of $1,372,000 effective March 9 of 2024. The Kate Smith Rehabilitation Project has street segments, includes street segments generally located north of Praterway and south of Audi Boulevard with those specific segments being identified on the slide above. The project will rehabilitate a 10,000, over 10,500 linear, linear feet of sidewalk, curb and gutter with the sidewalk improvements promoting walkability in the neighborhood surrounding the Kate Smith Elementary School. Another key component of this project would be to update all non-compliant ADA pedestrian ramps within the project limits. If council accepts the funds, the City of Sparks will be required to enter into a grant agreement with HUD by submitting a project narrative and budget concurrently with the submittal of the grant agreement. The grant agreement would become effective once HUD has approved the project narrative and budget. And upon that approval, we, no changes can be made without written formal approval from HUD. The city must also complete an environmental review with formal approval from HUD prior to expending any of those grant funds. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council has. And I've included a recommended motion on the screen.
All right. Question from the council. Ms. Bybee.
So you explained the process of us accepting it and then everything done afterwards. When you get through that, when do you anticipate the work can actually be done and when it would be finished approximately?
So we believe that all of the HUD paperwork would be completed likely late winter with the project being started heavily dependent on the weather in spring.
Okay, anyone else? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Rabbit.
I will take the motion. I move to accept fiscal year 2024, congressionally-directed Economic Development Initiative Community Project CPF Funding, grant number B-24-CP-NV-1513 in the amount of $1,372,000 for the rehabilitation of curb, gutter, sidewalk and driveway approaches in a residential community near Kate Smith Elementary School and direct the city manager to execute the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I'll add that those neighbors will be very thankful. They are very thankful for the last project we've been working on. They'll be even more thankful that it's gonna all get complete. So, good job.
Not really part of the motion, but...
I'll accept it.
Mr. Anderson.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Take what I said. Copy, cut, paste.
Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Casey. 9.8, consideration, discussion of possible acceptance of fiscal year 2024, congressionally-directed Economic Development Initiative Community Project CPF Funding, grant number B-24-CP-NV-1531 in the amount of $4 million for the development and renovations of the Audi project, a partnership between the Food Bank of Northern Nevada and the Children's Cabinet and direction to the city manager to execute the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Ms. Jones.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. For the record, my name is Amy Jones, housing specialist. And Mayor Lawson, I would like to request to present item 9.8, the acceptance of the Economic Development Initiative Community Project Funding for the Audi Project and item 9.9, the Audi Project Subrecipient Agreement together.
Go right ahead.
Economic Development Initiative Community Project Funding or CPF grants provide investment in a wide variety of projects, including housing, homeless prevention, workforce training, public facilities, parks, resilience planning and other critical infrastructure and services. In February of 2023, staff submitted nine projects to be considered for fiscal year 24 Congressional Directed Spending Appropriations. And in April of '23, the city was notified that several of the proposed projects were being sponsored and the projects were forwarded to the respective committees in Washington, DC for final consideration. And the city was notified in August of this year that the Audi project had been selected with an award of $4 million. The Audi project is a nonprofit partnership between the Food Bank of Northern Nevada and the Children's Cabinet. The Food Bank of Northern Nevada provides food for families in need through 155 partnering agencies and service programs and serves more than 155,000 people each month. And the Children's Cabinet's mission is to keep children safe and families together by providing programs and services at no charge to youth and their families to address unmet needs. The Audi project purchased the seven and a half acre parcel on the corner of Sullivan Lane and Audi Boulevard. And the Audi project will be renovating and rehabilitating the building outlined in blue. The Food Bank of Northern Nevada and the Children's Cabinet plan to develop a multifaceted community center named the Audi Project. The facility will include the following community resources: affordable quality childcare for 100 children ages infant to five years of age, commercial grade production kitchen for meal preparation, workforce training and job placement for high-demand industry sectors, onsite industry-recognized certifications, community food pantry and market, community connection center and resource hub, multi-use community meeting and classrooms, and wraparound case management services. The Audi project will use the funds to pay for costs such as the environmental review, architectural fees, engineering fees, demolition, rehabilitation and construction costs, site work and city fees. The total estimated revised budget is at $30,954,331. The City of Sparks will be required to enter into a grant agreement with HUD. The congressional approval date of the appropriations was March 9 of 2024. The amount awarded to the City of Sparks is $4 million specifically for the Audi project. The city will be required to submit the project narrative and project budget to HUD. And once those are approved, they cannot be changed without written HUD approval. The city is responsible for the compliance with the funding regulations and requirements. And the city will be required to submit semi-annual reports to HUD on the status of the project. And finally, all funds must be expended by August 31 of 2032. The Audi project will be required to enter into a subrecipient agreement with the City of Sparks. The award amount is $4 million. The Audi project must comply with all funding laws and regulations. The line item budget and project narrative will be part of the subrecipient agreement. The Audi project will be required to submit quarterly reports to the city on the status of the project. The Audi project must complete an environmental review and funds will be dispersed as reimbursement to the Audi project once submission, sufficient documentation has been submitted. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. And the two ladies that are making this happen, Nicole Lamboli, the CEO of the Food Bank of Northern Nevada, and Kim Young, CEO of the Children's Cabinet, are also here should you have questions of them. I have two separate motions. The first motion is on the screen, and that is the acceptance of the community project funds.
Mr. Dare.
Yes. So exciting to see this continue. I know you, I saw that it was 30 million total cost. Do we know how much more in case somebody out there wants to donate another 10 million or something?
I will let, when you would like to come up and answer that.
How close are we?
We have a little bit of ways to go. For the record, Nicole Lamboli, CEO, Food Bank of Northern Nevada. The 30 million also includes the cost for obtaining and acquiring the parcel and all the facilities. So that was about 7.5 million. So we've also raised with this about nine. So we're a little over, close to halfway, but we still have some work to do. We have a lot of interested parties who are willing to support this project, but we have to get through this environmental assessment first before we can move forward with any construction.
So then my only other question is, so it said has to be used by 2032. This is mean opened or just used for the purpose of assessment so we can move forward and do the best, they can do the best they can. Obviously, I have no idea what the future holds. I know they're pushing hard and will continue to help you on that, or I can commit to that. But is that, what if for some reason 2032 comes, the place isn't fully opened yet?
The funds must be expended by 2032.
Thank you. Good job.
Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Such an exciting project. I mean, it just, to bring so many multifaceted needs and services all in one place to that location. You've got HCA next to you with medical care, kind of just so many things that are needed in our city and in that location that bringing everyone together from Children's Cabinet to the Food Bank to the city, to all the different agencies and wraparound services is just a win-win for everyone. So super excited about the project. I guess on the fundraising, the environmental review needs to start. And obviously with the funds, should we approve these, you can get that rolling. What, will you be able to start construction and mitigation? I guess the beginning of the whole project before you raise the full amount of money? Or will you have to have the majority of the funds available in order, before you can start? I guess, because that'll affect your timeline. And optimistically, what is your best optimistic estimate of when you'd like to see it open?
Well, we're past, for the record, Nicole Lamboli, we're past the deadline Kim and I set for ourselves. We would have liked to have seen it open. But this is an amazing appropriation, and we do appreciate the Sparks team working with us and our delegation. But I think we are talking with our architect about being able to open it in phases so that we can, once we complete the environmental assessment and follow the requirements of the subrecipient grant, we will then be able to start the construction. Our goal would be mid-2025, so hopefully sometime around April. I know that's not quite mid. I'm optimistic. And that we would then be able to get the infrastructure done so that we could open services in phases. And, but we will continue to actively fundraise the funds necessary because we'd like to move this project. We're not waiting till 2032.
Good.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. First off, I just want to say, you ladies are doing incredible work in what you're doing. I mean, helping those with, you know, food insecurities, helping children in need and, and what you're combining. I don't know if you could go back to slide number four.
One more? Oh.
Right there. So not only are you currently doing great things for our community standalone, but the saying of we're better together, this, this is the perfect example of that. To see affordable quality childcare, since the pandemic, and I'm not sure how many people know this, there are less childcare facilities, fewer people that are providing childcare than before the pandemic. Think about how much our community has grown as a result. So being able to help with 100 kids, commercial grade production kitchen, workforce training, job placement, onsite and industry-recognized certifications, community food pantry. I mean, seriously, all this stuff is just so amazing to see how it's going to impact our community far beyond what the two of you are doing with your organizations right now. And this, this is a win. This is awesome. And then, now to the question. So if we go to slide number six, and it talks about the responsibilities. So there's going to be a pretty stiff responsibility on the city's behalf. And Amy, it's going to be you and your team, as I understand, that are going to be overseeing this. But you're going to be responsible for the funding compliance and semi-annual reporting. To me, that sounds like a pretty heavy lift. And my concern is, I want to help the community, but how can we help to offset expenses that are associated with this grant?
And, you know, at this time, we have not looked at any type of admin fee. We know that the Audi project needs all the funding that they can get. You know, the heavy lift is upfront, absolutely, as we get this project underway, the environmental review. And then from there, it shouldn't be as, as big of a time constraint that we would, you know, we're going to see this initial. So we, we haven't had that conversation yet as far as any type of admin fee.
Okay.
But I appreciate the concern.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And again, this is just an amazing project. And I'm so proud of you ladies for all bringing it together to us. So, thank you.
Mr. Rabbit.
Got you. Sorry. Definitely. Okay.
Pause.
And just to follow up, Councilmember Anderson, we, we could charge to the grant that time that is being spent.
Perfect.
Thanks, Jim.
Yarington's finest.
Yarington's finest.
You know, thank you, ladies. This is definitely an amazing resource that we're excited to be coming to our community. If they're, obviously, I think we're doing the math, 21 million we're chasing. Is that 30 million a total project? We have about nine right now, assuming with this. Is there anything for the community? You know, is there any active or a future fundraiser? We're not going to raise 21 million in one night. I get that. But is there anything that we can do or ask others to help?
Sure. For the record, Nicole Lamboli, the 21, it's not quite 21 million because we already, we own the property without debt. So there's probably, you know, costs are going up. And as was explained, we really are building a purpose-built facility. Have to thank your planning team for sharing that, meaning that we are building a facility that really has specific requirements. Obviously, we're putting in childcare. We have a commercial grade kitchen, so we have health department considerations. So we will be doing something. We just wanted to get through this process. This has been a learning process, I think, for all of us, even trying to find where it lives in Amy's experience with HUD. And we found a new thing she had to learn about. So we really appreciate. But I think now that we know if the council approves this 4 million, our board is really excited, the Audi project board, plus our respective boards to, to move forward. And once we narrow down the actual hard costs and we can put together construction budgets, we will be able to do something. And we will certainly keep you informed.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? All right, then I'm looking for a motion.
Award one day. I move to accept fiscal year 2024, congressionally-directed Economic Development Initiative Community Project CPF Funding, grant number B-24-CP-NV-1531 in the amount of $4 million for the development and renovations of the Audi project, a partnership between Food Bank of Northern Nevada and the Children's Cabinet and direct the city manager to execute the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Nine point nine, consideration discussion of possible approval of a grant agreement AC 6077 between the City of Sparks and the Audi Project, a nonprofit established by the Food Bank of Northern Nevada and the Children's Cabinet to provide fiscal year 2024 congressionally-directed economic development initiative, Community Project, or CPF, funding in the amount not to exceed four million dollars for the development and renovations of the Audi Project, a proposed multifaceted community center located generally at 2150 Audi Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, APN 026-442-11. Any other questions on this one? Not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
I move to approve the grant agreement AC-6077 between the City of Sparks and the Audi Project, a nonprofit established by the Food Bank of Northern Nevada and the Children's Cabinet to provide fiscal year 2024 congressionally-directed economic development initiative, Community Project, CPF, funding in the amount not to exceed four million dollars for the development and renovations of the Audi Project, a proposed multifaceted community center located generally at 2150 Audi Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, APN 026-442-11.
Ms. Bybee.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Amy. Nine point one zero, consideration discussion of possible direction to the city manager to initiate changes to Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to amend regulations related to manufactured home dealers. Mr. Carey.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. For the record, Scott Carey, Development Services Manager. This item is a follow-up to your September ninth city council meeting where Councilmember Vanderwell asked for an opportunity for the city council to look at amending our zoning code relating to manufactured home dealers. Currently, the zoning code allows for manufactured home dealers within the C2 zoning district. That's our general commercial zoning district with a conditional use permit. This item allows the city council the opportunity to provide the city manager with direction to potentially look at other zoning districts within the city where manufactured home dealers could be allowed for. If you'd like to move forward with this amendment, staff will get working on it and we will bring that before the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission and staff will then bring forward at a future city council meeting an item for your consideration to possibly amend the code. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Questions from the council? Ms. Bybee.
So Scott, we're just directing the city manager to look into this or have, give staff the ability. We're not identifying right now what those other zoning areas could be. That'll come back to us, correct?
That's correct, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion then. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to direct the city manager to initiate changes to Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to amend regulations related to manufactured home dealers.
Ms. Bybee.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right. There are no public hearing and action items unrelated to planning and zoning. I needed a ruling from the city attorney. It was not noted on the description of this item that it's a public hearing, but it is under the heading of planning and zoning public hearing. Is we good to move forward without any issues? We're going to do that, but it just wasn't, didn't say public hearing in the description. Okay. All right. So let's have our presentation. Mr. Carey.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Scott Carey, Development Services Manager, for the record. Today for the City Council's consideration is a review and consideration of a major conditional use permit to allow for an amendment to a previously approved special use permit to allow for outdoor storage and the construction of up to ten additional outdoor storage tanks for the manufacturing distribution of hazardous materials. One thing I will point out to start off with, from a procedural standpoint, the Planning Commission typically reviews conditional use permits. In this instance, because of the quantities and types of hazardous materials, the city council is the final authority on this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located on Larkin Circle.
Scott, can I interrupt you? I got ahead of myself. I didn't read the item in.
I got ahead of myself, too.
Yeah, between the two of us, we're way ahead. All right. PCN 03061 CU 24-0010, consideration and possible action on a request for a conditional use permit to amend the previously approved special use permit, PCN 03061, to allow for outdoor storage and the construction of up to ten additional tanks for the distribution, manufacturing, and storage of hazardous materials on a 5.03 acre site located at 2302 Larkin Circle, Sparks, Nevada, APN 034-171-42 in the I Industrial Zoning District. Now we're, now we're legal again.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The subject site is located on Larkin Circle. It's outlined here in red. There are three businesses that operate on the site now. On the eastern half of the existing warehouse building and on the eastern half of the site is the applicant Thatcher Chemical in Nevada. On the western half of the, of the main building is Patriot Environmental. Their environmental remediation service facility. And on the western side, there's Shine Master, which is an automotive business. There is an extensive history of hazardous materials on the subject site. Nineteen eighty-nine, the city council approved a special use permit to allow Sierra Nevada Chemical Company to construct the buildings on the site as well as to store hazardous materials on the site and distribute them throughout the region. Throughout the nineties, there were several amendments to that special use permit. And in 2003, that special use permit was last amended. At the time, the city was working with the property owner to bring the site into conformance with zoning requirements as well as some public safety issues at the site. The facility today manufactures, stores, and distributes chemicals throughout the region. There are currently four storage tanks on the site that range from twelve hundred and fifty gallons to thirteen thousand gallons in size for an overall onsite storage capacity of thirty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty gallons today. The majority of the materials that arrive to the site are by rail or by truck. And the, and these, and these products are used throughout the region. Here's some pictures of the interior of the distribution facility. The bottom picture here is kind of an overview of the yard. In 2001, the full operational history of the, of the site is outlined in the staff report. But staff will note that in 2021, the EPA, after conducting an inspection of the facility, determined to notice a possible violation at the site. As a result of this determination, the EPA and the applicant Thatcher Chemical reached an agreement to settle claims under the Clean Air Act and Emergency Planning and Community Right to Know Act. A copy of the EPA settlement agreement and a press release from the EPA is included in the staff report. The applicant is seeking to amend the 2003 special use permit to allow for the construction of up to ten additional storage tanks that would bring, that range from thirteen thousand five hundred gallons in size to twenty-five thousand gallons in size. In total, the applicant with the construction of these ten tanks is looking to increase the onsite storage capacity of the hazardous materials from thirty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty gallons to over two hundred and thirty thousand two hundred and fifty gallons. The subject site. So here is a copy of the phasing plan. This is the rear of the facility adjacent to the existing Union Pacific Railroad track. Phase one is outlined here in the orange on the right-hand side of the, of the screen or in orange. It's looking to construct two twenty-one thousand gallon tanks that would hold sulfuric acid. Phase two is outlined here in yellow in the middle. And that would have two twenty-five thousand gallon tanks that would store ferric chloride and aluminum sulfate. Phase three is outlined in blue. And that would conclude the construction of four twenty-five thousand gallon tanks that would be used to store polyethylene chloride, aluminum chloral hydrate, and hydrochloric acid. And phase four is outlined in green here. That would include the construction of two thirteen thousand five hundred gallon tanks that would be used to store hydrogen peroxide. Each tank that is proposed with this conditional use permit would be constructed with a secondary containment berm. These secondary containment berms are designed to hold the maximum of the largest tank that's, that's within that containment berm, plus the amount of rain that would fall on a twenty-four-hour, twenty-five-year storm event. Basically, what this means is that, for instance, here in, in orange, it would be able to hold a twenty-five thousand gallon spill plus two point three inches of rain that would fall under twenty, twenty-four hours. For this conditional use permit request, there were two issues that staff carefully analyzed. The first one is public safety. Due to the nature of the existing facility, the applicant operates under significant safety and security reviews from federal, local, and state agencies. Thatcher obtains annual permits from the Sparks Fire Department for fire alarms and operations at the facility. In addition, the facility is required by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to go through the Sensitive Security Information Protocol. The facility is also required by the Nevada State Fire Marshal to file an annual combined agency hazmat facility report. Purpose of this report is to provide first responders and local agencies with an inventory of what's on the site to help with first response activities. Earlier this year, at the request of the Sparks Fire Department, the facility underwent a third-party safety review. This third-party safety review found that, that overall, the site was generally compliant with regards to the International Building Code and the Fire Code. But it did, it did recommend fourteen improvements for, for the facility. Proposed condition of approval number six reflects the recommendations of that third-party safety review and requires that all recommendations be complied with prior to the issuance of any building permit. The other issue staff carefully analyzed was access and parking. Primary access to the site is from Larkin Circle. And there are two driveways onto the site. Vehicle access to the site is through a, through a security gate where drivers need to have either a badge or a code to enter in, into the site. Overall, this proposal is going to fundamentally shift the operations of the site from primarily totes and barrel of storage of materials into permanent onsite storage tanks. And with that, staff believes that, agrees with the applicant's conclusion that this would reduce and some less truck traffic on Larkin Circle. There are six findings the city council is going to be asked to make with respect to this conditional use permit. The first one is compliance with the comprehensive plan. This site has been assigned a industrial land use since the city's nineteen seventy-six master plan. Staff believes that proposed ten additional onsite storage tanks will support goals MG3 and policy MG15 by encouraging additional products to be transported by rail. The subject site and the adjacent existing rail spur is operated by Union Pacific. And staff finds that this proposed use is compatible with that sort of railroad facility. Staff believes that the request of additional storage tanks and the onsite outdoor storage will encourage further investment in the area of south of Interstate 80, which is in support of policy MG2. Permitting additional onsite storage capacity will enhance advanced goal EV1, which aims to grow and diversify the city's economy by allowing for additional products to be shipped throughout the region. And the project site is located in a developed area of Sparks where city services are being provided at acceptable levels in support of policy CF1. The second finding for the city council is compatibility with adjacent uses. The subject site is surrounded by the east, south, and west by existing industrial land uses and existing industrial uses. To the north of the subject site is the adjacent Union Pacific Railroad spurs as well as the Union Pacific Main Line. And to the north of that is Interstate 80. And to the north of Interstate 80 is a tourist commercial land use that's part of the Copper Canyon Plan Development. The project is designed to comply with all federal, state, and local laws governing the use and distribution of hazardous materials. As outlined in the conditions of approval associated with this request, the applicant will be required to submit and receive approval of emergency access plans, which do include evacuation procedures and shelter-in-place procedures in the event of the emergency. Through the enforcement of the existing federal, state, and local regulations regarding hazardous materials and the proposed conditions of approval, staff believes that these are adequate protections in place and do provide for compatibility with adjacent properties. The third finding is natural resources. The site has been developed with an industrial building since nineteen eighty-nine. We'll point out that the Truckee River is located nine hundred feet to the east of the subject site. And this was an important issue that staff looked carefully at during this review process. Most of the site is located within the FEMA Flood Zone AE. Each of the ten proposed storage tanks will have a secondary containment area that will be designed to construct with, with a wall and will be, and will be required to be located outside of the base flood elevation. Proposed condition of approval number nine requires all new tanks and all associated improvements within this zone to be constructed one foot above the elevation of three thousand nine hundred and ninety-three feet. Additionally, proposed condition number seven requires the applicant to develop a flood mitigation plan as well as develop a plan to ensure that totes and barrels on the site do not become floating vessels and, and, and hurt public safety during a flood event. Condition number four is conditioned as to address identified impacts. And there's four primary areas here that we looked at carefully in designing these conditions of approval. The first one is, is public safety. Proposed condition number five requires the applicant to designate a twenty-four-hour project contact to Sparks Police, Sparks Fire, and the Community Services Department throughout the life of the project. Proposed condition number six requires the applicant to comply with all recommendations of the Fire Department, including a site security plan that limits access to the site, developing a procedure for routine safety inspections, facility maintenance plans, and providing contact information for the onsite safety security officer. This proposed condition of six also includes compliance with all the recommendations of that third-party safety review. Proposed condition number seven requires the applicant to submit for review and approval to the Fire Chief an emergency access plan or emergency action plan. This action plan requires flood mitigation strategies and fire mitigation strategies, evacuation and shelter-in-place procedures, response protocols for explosion and spills on the site, and air plume analysis for the maximum release of all materials on the site and a spill control plan. Proposed condition of approval number eight requires the applicant to develop and maintain emergency response procedures for the safe handling of hazardous materials on the site. This condition also requires the applicant have spill tests and spill kits on, on the site throughout the life of the project. And this condition also requires annual or regular training exercises in conjunction with, with the Fire Department, regional public safety entities, and surrounding businesses. Another issue for conditions of approval is the expiration. According to the applicant, the construction of these ten tanks can take anywhere from ten, or from two to ten years, depending on, on the market conditions. One of the things with the municipal code is that it does limit the timeline for approval for a conditional use permit to two years. So proposed condition number two outlines that the applicant will have two years to construct all ten tanks. If any tanks that are not completed during this timeline would require a subsequent review and approval, an amendment to the conditional use permit. In the front of the, the site, the site is deficient. One required accessible parking space. Condition of approval number ten requires the installation of this parking space. Additionally, in the front, there is mature landscaping that staff does believe helps provide for mitigation of the potential impacts of this. Conditions of eleven require an inventory of this landscaping. And condition twelve requires that this landscaping be maintained throughout the life of the project. Finding C5 is public hearing. Finding C5 is public hearing. Notice of today's city council meeting was provided in the Reno Gazette-Journal on September 27th. In addition, 75 notices were mailed to property owners and tenants within 1,000 feet of the subject site and in compliance with state law. Additionally, state law requires enhanced notification and outreach to the Sparks Citizens' Advisory Board, the Administrator for the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, the Nevada State Fire Marshal, and the Administrator for the Division of Industrial Relations, military installations, and government entities. And the city council functions as a public hearing item. Before today's meeting, staff did receive three written public comments. One was from Mr. Franzia of Bobcat of Reno in opposition to the proposed project. Two other comments were from Mizer Enterprises. One public comment was in opposition to the project. But at around noon today, I received a notification from Mr. Mizer that he had met with the applicant, had a chance to tour the site, and is formally withdrawing his opposition. I believe we have representatives from Bobcat of Reno and Mizer Enterprises here today. And the last finding is required from state law. The first half is the health and safety of residents of the city. As designed and conditioned, this conditional use permit is not anticipated to adversely affect the health and safety of residents in the city of Sparks. So staff believes that we can make the first part of this state law finding. The second is with respect to the impacts on potential military installations nearby. The Nevada Air National Guard facility at the Reno Tahoe Airport is the closest active military installation. It's over two miles away. Staff did conduct outreach to the Nevada Air National Guard and the Nevada National Guard and did not receive any objections to the proposed project. So we believe that the proposal will not impact any nearby military installations. At the September 19th Planning Commission meeting, after conducting a public hearing, the Planning Commission did unanimously vote to forward a recommendation to the city council of approval of this request. During their public hearing, the four members of the public did speak in opposition to the project. If I were to summarize those four public comments, they were all from surrounding business owners who expressed some concerns about the proposed CUP request. The commission at this meeting also did modify condition of approval number seven to add the word applicable. This is the condition that requires the applicant to submit an air plume analysis for if these things get airborne. And then also, in response to the surrounding business owners' concerns that were brought up at the public hearing, the commission did add a requirement to condition of approval 6B, which requires a third-party safety review to the approval of the Fire Marshal once every three years throughout the duration of the project. And lastly, the Planning Commission did reiterate to the applicant that the need to maintain a positive working relationship with the surrounding businesses, the Planning Commission made it pretty clear that it was the expectation of the commission and the city, is that the surrounding businesses would be notified and would be invited to participate in safety drills throughout the life of the project. Overall, Mr. Mayor, staff believes that from a land use planning perspective, the proposed additional tanks and increased quantities of the hazardous materials are acceptable at this location. We believe that with the proposed conditions of approval, the enhanced safety requirements and operating requirements, that all of the findings can be made. I do, Mr. Mayor, there's no questions for me. We do have our Fire Marshal here, and the applicant's representative has a presentation as well, too. That concludes my long presentation.
We'll start with questions from the council. Mr. Anderson?
If the applicant has a presentation, do you think that would be advisable before we go to questions? It might answer some of the questions that I have because, being perfectly honest, I want to say welcome to both of you, and I probably have more questions I've had on the last six years on council. So maybe listening to what they have to present might be helpful.
Do you have anything?
No, I just got a few words I want to say, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and council member. For the record, my name is Patrick Hue. I am the Fire Marshal for the City of Sparks. The Fire Department is working closely with Thatcher Company throughout this entire process. I believe with the 14 recommended conditions of approval, including the required hazmat specialists reviewing a safety procedure every three years, that this facility can be safely operating within the guidelines of the federal, state, and local regulations. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions you or the public may have, assuming later on.
Let's hear from the applicant, and then we'll move on.
Good afternoon. For the record, Dave Snellgrove. I am the Planning Team Lead with CFA Bowman, and with me is Derek Chandler with Thatcher. I'm going to have Derek go through some initial things to kind of explain a little bit more of who Thatcher is, what Thatcher, what these materials are used for, and hopefully that'll answer some of your questions. Councilmember Anderson?
For the record, Derek Chandler. And as discussed, we're on the Lark and Circle. Thatcher Company is a chemical manufacturer and distributor. This site, we specifically are only a distributor. No chemicals are manufactured here. We purchased this site in 2017. Go on to that. And we support a lot of different industries. Municipal and industrial water treatment and purification is a huge part of our business in addition to agriculture, mining, manufacturing, and others. For the subject chemicals for this conditional use permit are largely geared toward water treatment and purification. In addition to that, hydrochloric acids, ferric acid, and hydrogen peroxide are also used in the mining and manufacturing industries. All of these chemicals, we currently store on our site in totes, drums, and some smaller containers. Next one. Being a chemical manufacturer, we are under a lot of regulation and review by different entities. We joke about alphabet soup. You can see a lot of acronyms in the slide. EPA, DOT, TSA, all of these are reviewing what we're doing. We also, as previously mentioned, work closely with the Fire Department. And again, one of the big things with this, we are storing these onsite. We would like to store these in bulk storage containers that we are able to put more safety controls on, such as level transmitters, that we can continuously monitor how much is in these. We can control it better. What we're doing currently is compliant and per the regulation, but this will allow us to improve our ability to control these and monitor them. And I'd just like to speak briefly to the, in 2021, to the claim violations from EPA. These weren't related to an event or a release. This was specifically related to some of our documentation, and we were, as mentioned, able to settle that with the EPA. And again, as mentioned before, there were some concerns, there were concerns expressed by our neighbors. It's very important to us to have a good relationship with our neighbors, and this is important to us moving forward. We have reached out to all the property owners adjacent to us, and we were grateful to be able to meet with a lot of them this morning and take them on a tour of our site. And it's our ambition to continue working closely with them and develop those relationships. You know, right along with that, condition eight is, requires us that we do work with all of our neighbors with a site evacuation plan and doing training with them on, doing annual action plan training with them.
Anytime that you have a conditional use permit that entails hazardous materials, it can be disconcerting because it's kind of a big box. So we do understand the concerns, and, you know, Thatcher has reached out. I let them know what we needed to do, and they have been very proactively moving forward to try and get in contact and get better information out. So I think condition eight, I do want to compliment staff in working through this project with staff and the way that they've conditioned it. Some of these conditional items will be duplicated by the alphabet soup that reviews, but there are going to be some other things that obviously Sparks Fire Department is going to look at things a little differently. The required every three-year reporting that they'll end up having to do and analysis, that I think that getting the products into tanks that have better controls and out of the mobile totes and barrels, and I'll show you some pictures, Scott had some similar ones, it's going to be safer. You don't have as many valves that you have to be dealing with or concerned about. So rather than having 100 different valves on 100 mobile totes or barrels, you'll have the one valve, or, you know, in end result, they'll hopefully have 10 tanks ultimately, but that will be likely a long process. So the project location is up on Lark and Circle. We're requesting the major conditional use permit for outdoor storage and for hazardous materials. Would allow for up to 10 tanks, and that will become important later in my presentation. I'll highlight that. The couple key elements here to this site and what make it so good for this type of use is that you do have the Union Pacific Rail Line just to the north of us, and there is a rail spur that comes off where the trains would be moving very slowly. And that's the intention of these types of sites that are adjacent to the rail is to be able to get that kind of service. And actually, a company like Thatcher really benefits from that. Bringing things in by rail presents a safer option than bringing multiple trucks in with different materials that are traveling on the highways. I know that there are, from time to time, things that do happen on rail lines, and we see those nationally. But generally speaking, the rail transport for this type of material presents a safer option. So the site is owned by, is operated by three different users. In the purple is Thatcher's general use area. You have Patriot Environmental and also Shine Master that share the site. The parking in the front of the building is shared, and condition 10 addresses some of the cleanup and things that need to be done in the parking lot area that Thatcher will be required to do. Scott mentioned, and I'll reiterate, the rear yard area, which is where the materials are stored, which is where the tanks would be. That is a secured area. I don't think we had these pretty colored maps up during Scott's presentation, so this one's a little different. On the left-hand side is the master plan, and on the right-hand side is the zoning map. Both identify the property as industrial, and it's been zoned this, as Scott said, since 1976. And this is an appropriate use with the allowance of an approval of a conditional use permit. So the primary area that we're talking about is in this red dashed area, which goes to a solid line. That's where the proposed tanks would be located, is up on the north side near the rail spur. As was mentioned by, I think Scott hit this, and also Derek hit this, these materials that are proposed to go into tanks are already allowed and stored on the site, just in different volumes. The tanks allow them greater volumes, but that would be based on market demands and conditions as the community continues to grow. There's some images. Up in the right-hand corner, Scott had a similar picture. That is one of the containment areas that's already been constructed. The way that this process all started is Thatcher thought, okay, we already have the allowance for these materials. We'll go out, we're going to put a tank up. And once the tank, once the tank building permit came in, that's when staff said, hey, wait a minute, you're going to need to get a conditional use permit for this. So the tank on the bottom right-hand corner, that bottom right-hand picture, that is the tank that will get installed in the containment area, which is up on the top right. So that containment area is already there. You can see a circular disc on the bottom. That's where one of those tanks, that's where that tank will go. There's a lot of things that they're going to have to go through before they can get their building permit. All those conditional items, say, prior to the issuance of a building permit, they're going to have to go through all those before they can move that tank over into the containment area and start it operating. The pictures on the left show mobile totes and barrel areas where a lot of this material is currently stored. And this gets back to, it's easier to control one valve or two valve or, in argument, 10 valves instead of, you know, the, you know, tens or hundreds of different barrels and totes that they have out there. So it does present a safer storage option in terms of what they're storing on the site. Just pictures of the outdoor storage area, because that is part of our request, and then pictures of the front yard landscaping area. Scott got on and talked about the flood zone area and mentioned that most of the site does have flood zone AE on it, which has a known base flood elevation of 4,393 feet in elevation. I'll point out, down here in the bottom left-hand picture, the top portion of the site that's closest to the rail spur, that's out of the flood zone area in most part, and that's where the tanks are proposed to be located. So on this image here, on the right-hand side, the larger one, we do have hatched on there with the blue hatch. That's where the flood zone runs. So that initial containment area that I showed you has already been constructed. The southern end of that does get nipped by the flood zone area, but the rest of the proposed future containment areas and tanks are outside of that zone AE. But they are still going to be required to meet the one foot above base flood elevation and meet the requirement for the storage of largest tank if it were to spill, plus the...
25-year.
25-year. Yeah, the 25-year storm for a 24-hour period. Thank you. The original application, I mentioned earlier, the 10 tanks, they're going to put one in here, and in all likelihood, it'll probably be the closest one to the rail in berm two, which is in phase one. When we initially submitted this, I knew that this is a fairly onerous process, it's fairly lengthy to go through. I know it can be disconcerting, so I asked them to put on their crystal ball and see what they thought they'd need moving forward. So they looked in a long-run vision, and we initially asked for a 10-year approval to see if we could get that, thinking that maybe we'd get some pushback to something shorter. In the end result, staff was only comfortable recommending the standard two-year, and there is a one-year extension allowance that comes with pretty much any conditional use permit that is provided by the city. Going through this process, hearing some of the concerns from the neighbors, I've talked to Jane and to Derek with Thatcher and said, you know, this is kind of the test case for you. Thatcher themselves hasn't gone through any conditional use permitting in the past. Sierra Chemical did, and they were the beneficiaries of that, moving on and purchasing the site. However, this will be, they've operated well. I think the Fire Marshal identified that they do work very well with Thatcher. It'll give them a period where they can get, they'll probably only get one or two of the tanks established over that timeframe, in all likelihood. So the big number of a couple hundred thousand gallons, in all likelihood, won't happen in the short timeframe. They'd need to come back, and in that timeframe, a lot of these things that are conditioned in here, along with working with the neighbors and making sure that they are having that good communication, all those things can happen and can be proven out. So in their long-run vision, they'll probably be able to come back with a real similar application in, let's say it's three years, two years plus a one-year extension. But I think that where we're at with this and some of the concerns and questions that have been brought up by the neighbors, and I think they're very good questions and concerns, it'll help those things get proven out. So with that, we're in agreement with the staff's assessment and review of the Planning Commission's unanimous recommendation of approval for this request. We agree with the conditions as presented and that were amended by the Planning Commission. We believe that all the necessary findings can be made, and we respectfully request your approval of the project.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and that did answer a few of the questions, but actually, I would like to have staff come back up, and I've got some more for And I want to say thank you guys very much for spending a great deal of time working on this and addressing these issues. I mean, it's, like you mentioned in your presentation, to go from 30,000 to 230,000 is a big jump. And I can understandably, I can understand the concern of the neighboring businesses as they've got hundreds of employees and customers that are coming and going from their facilities and wanting to make sure they're all safe. So safety, I'm glad that that's number one. That was my concern as well. As I went through this and I looked at each of the products that they're looking at increasing the amounts on and storing, and looking at the safety data sheets, I was glad to see we weren't talking about explosives or flammables or poison inhalation or anything like that, that on most part, they were corrosive, with several of them having, in case of a spill, the eye, skin, and respiratory tract irritation. having in case of spill, the eye, skin and respiratory tract irritation. So it's not like it's going to kill you. So that, that was a relief to me. What did concern me is the second group, hydrochloric acid, sulfuric acid, hydrogen peroxide. Those, it was telling you that if there's a spill, you have to be upwind of it, which most of those businesses are downwind from, from this facility. It also says that do not breathe. Immediate medical attention is required if you do. Causes burns by all exposure routes. Keep away from heat spilled, I'm sorry, heat, I'm sorry, trying to read my notes here. Heat, sparks and other ignition sources. And so that's with these, these last three. And those are the ones that are actually causing me the most concern and wanting to make sure in doing their work and engaging with their neighbors in, in safety, those are pretty much the things that I'm going to be focusing on. With those being said, like I said, talking about being downwind and that you don't want to breathe some of these. So with that being said, how does an emergency evacuation process take place? I, I understand that's a part of the plan and they have to do that. And is this where the third party comes in helping with that? Or is this actually with, with your team at the fire department or how, how do we come together on that?
Again, Patrick Chu, the fire marshal for Sparks. It's all the above you just mentioned. The third-party hazmat specialist is going to be somebody who specialized in these types of chemicals. And what you mentioned, hydrogen peroxide is probably the most corrosive and acidic of, of all these products. But the, the third-party consultant again is, is there to make sure that all the safety procedures are, are in place, that there's no complacency, that training is done. Station three, as you know, is close by. They are certified in hazmat. That's one of the requirements to work at station three, as you probably know. So all that all together, in addition to, we go out there every year to inspect this place. I just feel that this is going to be a, a safe facility. That hydrogen peroxide, by, by way, it's, it's phase four. So it's the last phase of this. So that's pushing it on to the 10th year probably, if they're successful in building everything else out. But there's a reason why it's phase four and it's also on the farthest end of all the silos. But yeah, I believe with the hazmat specialist, I'm going to recommend one or two that they should contact and they can select one of the two that I feel that are competent enough and able enough, their PhD for, for that matter, on, on this type of subject, that they're going to be looking into interviewing them and see who they want. And they're going to work directly with us, although they're going to be paid for and supported by Thatcher, but they're going to come to us and let us know some of the concerns that we need to address with them.
Okay, thank you. And so in that plan, that would also be a part of the process of determining, you only have one exit, one entrance into Larkin Circle. Should there be mass evacuation, is that going to be one of the things they'll be studying? How can we effectively, efficiently get hundreds of people out of that area through one, one point?
Well, that's part of their conditions that they need to supply to us. How are they going to do that, to save the procedures in place, that they're going to work with the fire department? That plume study that we're asking to do, that's all part of this. So we'll obviously going to learn as we go along. This is a very unique project for City of Sparks. So we definitely want to make sure that we get the best consultant on board, that we're on top of our game, the fire department, as well as Thatcher and a third-party consultant together will, will make this a safe project.
Thank you. So then the next part of it comes to the process of notifying their neighboring businesses. And I, I didn't see that it was, it was very clear in the wording of the conditions on how they're going to maintain that. So it's, I believe it's got to be not just a one-time shot that I'm contacting these folks today, letting them know what I want to do, but letting them know ongoing process of how we're, how we're doing our business, what we're doing in case of an emergency and involving them in those plans. And I did see that in there, but I didn't, I didn't see that it was actually every year they're going to be performing this with their neighbors or anything like that. Is that, did I miss that in it?
Okay. That's all part of this conditions of approval. So before they even put those silos on there, we'll review their, their procedures and once we get to a point where we're satisfied with that, then they can move forward.
And Councilman, member Anderson, my apologies, Scott Carey for the record. Condition of approval number eight, you know, it does require an annual emergency action, action plan be submitted to the fire marshal and that they do regularly conduct training exercises and that the neighbor, neighboring businesses are, are included in that. I think to your point, council member, maybe there's something lacking in the current conditions of approval that requires that annual notification. And, you know, something, something we could consider maybe adding in a certain radius. We did 1,000-foot radius for all, for this public carrying, so maybe it's an annual, you know, everyone within 1,000 feet gets notified of the safety procedures and here's a copy of the annual plan and that the applicant maintains such, such a list or something like that effect. Be happy to add that to the conditions of approval you'd like.
Okay. And then I guess one kind of spinoff of that is who and how are they being communicated with both for the applicant as well as the neighboring businesses? Because I think that would have to be ongoing. Whoever's there today may not be there tomorrow. So we, they may be not getting an answer when they're calling to go, hey, we've got an emergency going on over here. You need to evacuate. So I'm not, not sure how we could put that into the wording of it, but I, I think that would be critical to make sure, again, it's not a one-time shot, it's an ongoing process.
Yeah, I think, I think that's an excellent suggestion, council member. You know, obviously land use entitlements do run with the land. So if Thatcher sells the business, someone else comes in, they would be subject to these conditions of approval. So some sort of language to that effect, maybe a new condition of approval requiring that annual noticing and, and regular contact of the, the plan and, and here's a drill coming up kind of a thing, something we can, we can, we can add.
All right. Thank you guys very much. That's actually all the questions I have. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, mine, mine are similar, but I want to talk to it for a second because you, you hit on something that it would seem if these have the same chemicals we're going to have, that there's something been missing if this conversation hasn't been going on of safety for that area, which makes it to where we're, some of our businesses around there feel you're going to add something that they already maybe have potential questions about because we've not functioned. And so I'm going to say that it's more habits. The habits of Thatcher or whoever was there before that we're not communicating very well. I mean, I'm guessing by conjecture of what I, what I'm seeing here. So I'm a little concerned, not that it's an industrial area and we put chemicals there. That's what industrial, that's what this area is for. I love that the railroad's there. I love all this stuff, but I'm concerned about habits. I'm concerned about, we can't make people have relationships, that, that we can't make, but we can put down things that are consistent of making sure that these emergency plans are in place. And it seems like something should have already been in place. And now because they're adding more to it, of course they need to add more, but it doesn't seem like it's that come, that basis, that foundation's even in place, which is just a concern. It's one that I hope Thatcher hears me, hears me saying really clear and hopefully our fire department hears that as well because I, it would seem like this should already be in place and they should be building upon a, a safety foundation. Cause I mean, our C2 and C4, I can start going through your numbers, they're not being fulfilled even before we approve anything new as of now. So I, it concerns me, but I don't question that you can't overcome it. I actually think, again, this is industrial, there's no other place for this kind of thing to go. And so those things are important, but I'm concerned we'll get past this and then all of a sudden they got what they wanted. And I'm not saying you're going to do this, but you wouldn't be the first business that did something like that. And they get what they wanted, they said yes to all the right things, and the next thing you know, no one's hearing from anybody, there's nothing to enforce it. So that's where my concern comes is the habits that are there and what we've allowed.
Councilman Dare, that's a outstanding question and that's the reason why we got this third-party independent hazmat specialist to go in there and evaluate this. This is something that hopefully if they select one of the two companies, this is what they're passionate about and they will report to Thatcher and to the fire department on what needs to be put back in place or revised.
So one more question, sorry. So is this third-party just to come give recommendations like a beginning or do they stay with the company and making sure they do it? Maybe I'm confused.
Um, well, uh, these are chemicals that are very unique to the average person. The two companies that I'm familiar with, one of them's actually a PhD in chemistry and she actually works for, the owner of the company actually works in a field very similar to this. And I got full confidence in this particular company. I got full confidence in both of the companies, to be honest.
And I question that chief, that's not my question. I just don't, I don't know, but I just want to get to, are these a one-time come in and they give their thing? Or is this somebody who kind of stays with the company that stays for, they're a part of the conversation?
Yeah, council member Dare for the record, Scott Carey. I think how proposed condition six B would work is that, that's the, that's the condition that requires them to have that third-party safety review every three years. So that would be a continuing thing that, that would run with the entitlement with, with the land.
Okay. And then we every once a year.
Yeah, once a year. But even if they go every three years, if they have things that need to get corrected, they're just not going to walk away and come back in three years and see if it's there or not. They're going to make sure that those items are corrected as part of their every three years inspections.
Thank you. That clarifies.
Anyone else? Okay. Brought up a lot of questions. There was one in there said a contact person, one of the conditions. That automatically threw up red flags in my head is I might be the contact person today, but I've taken another job and you guys are calling me and I'm at my new job. How do we, how do we keep that up to date so that it's working? Is that part of the condition that, I mean, just looking at where the, you know, if there's a point of failure, I will guarantee you we're going to find it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that, that, that's a good question. I think just conceptually in my mind, if we were to add a condition of approval for, you know, annual contact, I think it would work pretty similar to our, our public noticing. We have records with the assessor of who the current property owner is. We also have a database that we tapped into for the tenants as well too, for this, this public noticing. So maybe the applicant would have to purchase that list from, from, from the city for, for whatever radius we want to put on there to ensure that we have the current contact info because you'd hate to send it to Dale Smith Industries when it's really Jill Industries.
Right. And then how do we at the fire department, when we go out for, do we have a review that's held? I mean, do we have to say, okay, this stacker chemicals come up, read the conditional use permit?
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Jim Rundell, Assistant Community Services Director. To your, more directly to your question of, of Scott Carey, based on some earlier comment from Councilmember Anderson, our, my intent is we're drafting a condition maybe during the public comment, component that would address what you're asking for and also the timing of how often the applicant has to work with the property owners and from what distance. I think another component to directly to your question would be how often does that project contact have to be updated? Potentially at the business license renewal, maybe once a year, but we don't know when that person's going to leave, but I'm already considering some concepts of what we could put in for the council to consider as a whole to potentially add as an additional condition to your point.
Because it would be a shame to have something happen and not be able to contact that company.
And you're calling someone that's.
Somebody who doesn't work there.
Correct. Understood. So I don't think we have an answer yet, but we're working on it.
That's where my concern is. Obviously the storage of it, I get the safety part of it, the valves, all that makes a lot of sense to me. The rail delivery makes a lot of sense to me, but the bigger thing is there's still several hundred people that work in that, in that area that we, we want everybody to go home.
Yes, understood.
Mayor Lawson, I, I could partially maybe answer that. Today I got a, a call for dispatch. When we go on and do our annual business license, part of their procedure is to make sure the contact person is, is current. So there's been some hiccups between, in the past in regards to do we delete it or add on, on top of that? So the answer is no, you take out the old contact when we send you the new list and you replace that with the new email.
Because I could see that list being 20 people long.
Well, some has been 20 people long. So that's no, delete all those and if you get a new list with that address, you put that new business name on there.
I'm more concerned about the other businesses around.
Sure. Yeah, well, if we do inspection on that too.
They don't necessarily have to tell you they're leaving their job. It's not, they're not on the conditional use permit. How do we maintain that list to be accurate?
Yeah. Well, at least from the fire department side, if we go out and do a annual business inspection on there too, that will have a new business person to contact on that list.
Right. We have all my questions. Mr. Anderson.
So wouldn't it be similar to an S P C C plan? Because on those, you have to have your current points of contact, right? I mean, you're, that's a part of the, the agreement that you have an updated contact list in there. So wouldn't it, I, I agree with the mayor. The one that I think is going to be the more difficult is all of the surrounding businesses and having that updated contact because they might not all have hazardous material, materials or something on, on my end.
Well, like Jim Rundell and, and Scott said, we could put a conditions on that to, to have those, a list updated within 1,000 feet as part of their conditions.
Okay. Any more questions, Ms. Bybee?
So just a quick question as we're looking at right now, the 31.9 capacity today, all those chemicals that are listed on the proposal for the 10 different tanks, all those chemicals are on site today, correct?
Um, I'm not sure if the hydrogen peroxide is.
I'd defer that one to the applicant.
Yeah.
Derek Chandler for the record. So our inventory is going to vary at any given moment depending on demand. So these are all chemicals that we have had on site or we currently have on site today and we may have tomorrow. So as of today, I, I'd have to look at our inventory to see if we have them all currently in stock, but they are all chemicals that we currently have to varying degrees of volume.
Okay. So, and, and all of these chemicals right now, as you look at the pictures too, a lot of them are stored in the totes. Uh, and really to me, it makes so much more sense to look at the tanks. And I, I understand too, the apprehension when the people look at that amount, it is kind of a scary number to look at, but then when I look at those totes, I get more nervous about the totes than I do about seeing a big tank with the wall around it with the overflow, the safety perspective for me, even though it's more volume. And I think all the conditions that we're adding on that really to me tells a better story of even more enhanced safety, which with the increase that you're asking for makes perfect sense because we, we have to, we have to protect everyone. We have to protect Thatcher and all the people around it and our community in the river and all of that. So I appreciate all the conditions, but I just wanted to be clear that really those chemicals are there today, obviously not in the amount of volume, but the storage difference of more volume, but safer volume is really what we're looking at here today. And you wanted 10 years and we can only give you two plus one today. So really initially, and I love the fact that we're really looking at check-ins with the fire marshal, check-ins with the third-party to be monitoring this, that maybe in the next, say two plus one years, you might only have two tanks or you might only have three or four that are built at that time, but we're able to look at how is that working and address any issues or changes we might need at that time. And you're asking today, I get that, we're considering 10. The reality of whether those 10 are being built in the next two years are from what our conversations have been are kind of slim, but my approval today would be on the 10 ultimately. Okay, thank you.
For the record, if I could just add, the, the timing of this in the, the three-year third-party review, that actually works very well with the two years plus one year. About the time if they're still moving forward, let's say they have two tanks built, there would be that third-party review and maybe it's, you know, within three years, it would behoove them to go ahead and have that done before they come back to get reissuance of more. And if they've come back and they're a glowing citizen and everything's been going great, maybe at that time you look at it and say, yeah, you know what, this makes more sense. This is an onerous process to go through. Maybe at that time they get five years or something a little bit longer, but it gives an opportunity for that first thing to go through. There's annual updates to safety plans that have to be done. There's a third-party review every three years. There's a lot of, lot of things to this. There's a lot of, lot of things to this that can be proven out. In, with the comments about who, who to notify, making sure that you have an update, updated list, and that can be wrapped in, it makes sense to wrap it in with Condition 8, that when they do the updated safety plan, they have to go to the Fire Department every year. Sounds like the Fire Department has a good listing. There's going to be updated listing, not as fast through the assessor's office, but that does get updated in making sure that they have the right people on that. When that is done, doesn't mean that two months after that's done, someone might leave that was on your contact, but as long as you have a good valid number to reach that business, that can be part of that annual update to the safety plan.
Mr. VanderWiel.
Thank you, and this is for the applicant. So on the hydrogen peroxide in your proposed tank storage, it states that there is a dilution that happens. So do you dilute that? Are you, are you going to be diluting the hydrogen peroxide prior to putting it in the tanks?
Yeah, so the hydrogen peroxide we're specifically proposing is under 52%, which is the threshold for whether or not it's a highly hazardous material or not. We would likely bring it on-site at a dilution below, well below 50%. We would not, we would typically, we may dilute it as it, we may put it in the tank and then add water to dilute it. More likely than not, the dilution would be adding it to some kind of a mobile container and then adding the requisite water to further dilute it. But it would never come in on-site above that threshold, above the 50% threshold.
Hey, Mr. Dare.
What you just said, is, is that because you don't do that? Or because what if the next company does it? So is that per some standard? Is that E A, is that PPA? What, who decided that?
Yeah, so that threshold is set by the EPA if I end up, it's reg, federal.
Very cool, thank you. My, my final thought is it really goes to Chief. And, and I say that because once we're done, you, you're the man, you, you guys are the one that's going to make sure this happens, doesn't happen, whatever. I, I do think that Thatcher has a responsibility, however they do it, to make sure they know who is working at these other places to expand that. But I think the biggest thing that I want to hear from you, Chief, I know you've said that with that question, you feel good about this, is that with all the things that we spoke about, the parameters, do you, do you feel like this is something that you can stand with, that you can, we can't put extra work on you guys and all of a sudden you're keeping track of all the businesses? Because that's, that's not going to happen.
No.
So, so with that said, that's probably, for me personally, you guys do your job, we hire you to do your job, we trust you to do your job. And so in the end, given all our concerns, what's your response to that?
Again, Pat Chu, Fire Marshal for Sparks, again, that's for whole purpose of this third-party hazmat specialist to commit to going out here to auditing this business every, every three years with the expectation if they find anything they need to correct, they're not going to give them three years to correct it. They will correct it as part of their inspection and then it'll come back again another three years. We'll go out there on, with our inspector, like we normally do, our inspector been out there every year for the past several years, we'll go out and do the same thing, but to the level of a, somebody that's, that's really familiar with hazmat is, you really do need somebody that specializes in that particular field.
Understood, thank you. Good shit.
Yeah. Walt White, for the record, Fire Chief, City of Sparks. When we have a target hazard or fixed facility like this, you know, typically when it's static and stored isn't really the, the risk, it's during the transfer and transport of this is where the risks increase. All of our first responders have, you know, at least hazmat responder operational, you know, everybody's got awareness operational level. Due to the wisdom of this council, we got a regional hazmat coordinator who oversees our regional hazardous materials response program. So he has been diligently building, you know, databases and, and having training and recruitment of our hazardous materials response team. So I actually feel, having gone through hazmat specialist training myself, I feel like the, we have put in place a very effective hazardous materials response program in this region. The facility itself is, I feel, as long as they have the procedures of the transfer of product done and done well, even the access and egress limitations, it kind of provides for a little bit more of a controlled, should we need to establish a gross decon quarter or controlled, of the, the personnel, of people that could be impacted by this. But more of the, more chemicals are transported daily on our roadways at a higher risk than, you know, I think we're really going to see with the transfer of product from this fixed facility, but I assure you that our hazardous materials, our, our regional hazmat coordinator, Nick Klatch, has been very well informed on this and will continue to ensure that the training and the exercises that need to occur for us to adequately respond will, will continue.
Any other question from the council? Mr. Abbott?
I have one for you, Mr. Chu. Looking at the, the three-year, the safety review plan, and you sounds like you already had two, that, two companies you would suggest, what if they went with a, someone else that, you know, maybe something you don't know about and they, they do a safety review and we're not happy with it? Do we have the ability to say, no, we want you to use someone else? Like, we don't like what they came up with, we're, I don't know. What options do we have there?
Councilman Abbott, what I had discussion with Thatcher was I'm going to give them a list of two, maybe three companies, and they're going to select one or two or three, one of those three-
Okay.
-out of the, off that list that I feel that are capable to do the job.
Sorry to kick our Fire Marshal out of his chair, but the, to your, your question, Councilmember, that third-party review every three years would be to the approval of the Fire Marshal.
That's what I thought, just making sure. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we're going to open this up for public comment. I have one public comment card. Kathy Drake?
Esteemed members of the Spark City Council, I am Kathy Meiser Drake, owner of a family held three-acre square foot warehouse building that is located Kitty Corner to the Thatcher distribution site on Larkin Way. Where's Larkin Circle? It's one block south of Interstate 80 when taking the shared exit at Vista and Greg. Larkin Circle is parallel to Interstate 80. The predominant winds in our area come from the west and the south. We were concerned that a Thatcher chemical plant plume might easily reach Interstate 80 and close the freeway as well as mandating evacuation of our building. Also, this proposed conditional permit revision would increase the volume of chemicals stored across the street from us from 32,950 gallons to 230,250 gallons, 7.2% over what's there now. We have reviewed the recent spills within Thatcher's 13 facilities in the Western United States. The most recent ones were in 2019, 2023, and 2024. They all involved nitric acid and sulfur dioxide. I toured their facility this morning and I met with Derek Chandler, who is their licensed chemical engineer who you've already talked to, Jane Rogers, who's in the audience, who is their general manager, and Herson Perez, who is their on-site contact person, should there be an incident happening with all of their controls within their tanks. He's on-site, he's 24/7, and I was impressed that he's local. Neither nitric acid nor sulfur dioxide will be stored at this site. There will be no manufacturing of chemicals on this site. The site will only be classed as a distribution facility. I have one concern with the special use permit. We would ask that in an additional condition-
Three minutes, go ahead and finish up, though.
I just have very little, Mr. Lawson. Condition be added to the proposed compliance requirement. Thatcher shall be required to maintain a current contact list of surrounding businesses and building owners. Thatcher will reach out to its neighbors to discuss spill leak notifications. Thatcher will aid his neighbors in the development of each business's evacuation plans. Our family withdraws its opposition to the special use permit. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak at this time? I need you to fill out a card for me after you're done. But come down and give us your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and others. My name is Brad Spencer. The president of our company, Don Franzia, we helped author a letter that we did send in. It was dated October 22nd, so I'm presuming everybody received that and had the opportunity to review it. I'm just going to do a few highlights here, if I may. Starting with the third-party safety review, Exhibit 9 includes a statement, "This evaluation did not include an overall review of the facility design, construction, allowable areas, setbacks to property lines or other requirements typically reviewed during initial building construction and tenant improvement." I believe this is a tenant improvement and I believe that the whole facility should have been looked at as a whole. I have a few challenges for you. Trying to figure out who's got skin in the game, who owns the property? Earlier, just a little bit ago, I believe it was said it was purchased the site in 2017. The records that I came up with, SKK Properties, Larkin Circle, March of 2019. So does Thatcher have a lease and that's their end of the skin of the game or property owners have a different liability? So at the end of the day, who's going to be part of this, this controls? The last part I want to bring to your attention is, yes, it is the area is NGAU, this is part of the neighborhood code map for Sparks, and NGAU is Sparks Industrial. But there's also a piece right there, right about where they're at, that is NGVV, which is Common Area, per the Neighborhood Code Map. Anybody know what that's supposed to be for and how it'll assist in proper permitting? Thank you very much for your time.
All right, anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Please fill out a card for us, sir.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Nancy Franzie. I'm one of the co-owners of Bob Catarino. And just sitting here, I have a few or several questions. First of all, Scott, I missed your position with Thatcher Chemical.
This is Derek.
Oh, Derek, sorry.
Derek Chandler, I'm a senior project engineer-
Ma'am, please, you have to address us.
Okay, sorry. So I missed his position. I didn't know if he was part of management, part of ownership, he was a chemist.
That's fine. You're addressing the council.
Okay, sorry. You realize that that property has three tenants? It has Thatcher Chemical, it has an environmental cleanup, and it has a auto. So I don't know what they do on the auto side, but I would imagine there's some flying sparks. I had a question, if those chemicals hit soil and they contaminate soil, what, what type of landfill will that soil go, go to? In other words, how bad is that stuff? How nasty is that stuff? Is it a landfill? Is it a Class 1? That, that contaminated soil would have to go to Class 1, would have to go to Class 2. How bad is that stuff? Three, I mean, not three, another question, is it flammable? I know we talk a lot about water, we talk about the flood zone. Okay, Asheville, North Carolina wasn't expecting the flood they got either, and there's a river not that far away. Insurance, we'd want to see their insurance because something happens. We want to make sure we are listed as additional insured and see their policy. And I know we talk a lot about up to 10 tanks, but I think you have to keep in mind, it's up to 235,000 gallons of this hazardous material. And I think that's all my comments for now. Let me just check my list here.
Thank you. Please fill out a card for us. We can have it as part of the record. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak at this time? All right, we'll bring it back to the dais. Mr. Carey, how do you want to proceed? Seems to me we have lots of questions and other things that need to be added or deleted to this CUP.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Let's see. Just kind of following up on the discussion earlier with the, with the, with the City Council regarding potential new condition of, of approval. Maybe take a stab at a new, some new condition language here.
Mayor, can we have a recess to confer?
My question is, do you want to go back and put some thought into this reconfiguration? Or do you want to continue ahead and try and make it work today?
Mayor, I, there is an opport, I would like to discuss a few things with some colleagues, Mayor, if we could get a recess and then respond to your question.
Five minutes and that's, we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
I want it to be perfect, Bill. The last thing we want to do is have something wrong.
Well, yeah, yeah, but I think a lot of the questions and concerns were answered in those conditions that are there and answered.
Scott, we got more questions than we have answers right now. So I'll tell you what I'm comfortable with. So we get this right and we get it right the first time is I'd like to see it come back at a later meeting and answer these questions. There were some good questions that were brought up in just in the interim, an audible alarm that would notify all the residents, you know, some other things in that in that genre. But I want to, you know, this isn't a serious, it's a very serious thing that affects a lot of people. And I don't know how many employees we have working down there, but I imagine there's a couple hundred at least. But it's, you know, it's something that we need to be very diligent on. It's something unfortunately for you guys that it got brought to our attention. So now we have to really pay attention and take that extra steps and do this right the first time. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask the council if we can get a motion to move this to our first December meeting. Because we have about, well, three out of the five are going to be at a another meeting at the end of November. Or, yeah.
First November meeting.
First November, okay.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Jim Rundell, Assistant Community Services Director. Mayor, I appreciate the sentiment that you just provided for the council's consideration. I would also ask, as you said, the audible alarm, that is something staff can explore to prepare for a potential continuance if there's anything else on conditions that council or yourself would like us to consider if we could bring that up now so we can prepare for that December meeting.
Do we want to start? Well, let me start with Deion.
I think Jim captured that appropriately. We just want to hear the discussion from council. If there's other pieces out there that you want us to look at, think about, and dive in a little bit deeper, if we can have that discussion now, staff will capture that information. So when we come back at the appropriate meeting in the future to present it to you, we've encompassed all that we can into that and have had good robust discussion and can bring you back something that encapsulates that.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Dare. Do you have anything to add?
It's not second, it's just the proper communication connection.
Byby.
I think most of my questions have been answered, although in a conversation with the mayor on the break here, we talked about something that we hadn't considered was the the possible, what would happen if there happened to be a spill that was more than one of the chemicals interacting with each other? What even the odds would be and kind of how, I mean, obviously Thatcher's in that business. So having a little more info on is that even possible? And if so, what is it, you know, what kind of danger? And someone had asked in public comment about it being flammable. I thought somebody, one of the chemical engineers said no, but that that would be my only, you've answered all the rest of my questions, so I'm good with everything else. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, sir. So yeah, actually, what I wanted to do is under condition seven, fire department emergency action plan, I'm adding to section C where it's talking about the evacuation plan and sharing that with your surrounding businesses. I'd like to put in a distance of 1,000 feet with that, so all of the surrounding businesses within 1,000 feet, as well as the the next section under eight, the emergency response procedures, spill kits and safety drills. In the end, talks about surrounding businesses, I want to add 1,000 feet to that as well. And then I'm not sure the best way to do this, I really love the idea of, it was actually the neighbor's idea of having the audible alarm, kind of like what Kinder Morgan has at their facility, something that's loud enough that everyone in the block can hear that that alarm's going off. But likewise, I really think we need to have an ongoing plan for working with notifying, knowing who it is at those businesses that are going to be the points of contact as well as at Thatcher. So those are the things that I'd look to see added in. I'm not sure if that would fall under seven or eight, but however, you could put that in there as well.
Ms. Vanderwell.
I'm going to agree with Councilman Dare. I think what has happened and what we've heard along the way is that communication has been lacking, not blaming it on Thatcher, I think it was the previous owner and everybody just ran and did their business. And if something happened, they let their neighbors know. But I think that communication and noticing each other, you know, as much as they can so they know what's coming in. And then also, Councilwoman Byby, I'd like to know if something gets mixed, if it then becomes flammable or not. I'd already asked about the hydrogen peroxide, that part of it is diluted at the time. So I guess that's my other question is, you know, when they're diluted, are they less toxic or not? And what's the dilution factor of the chemicals?
Mr. Abbott.
Round this up. I agree with Councilman Anderson, I believe it was the audible alarm. Not sure if there's any other options of, you know, maybe using technology of a way to, like, I think if I got my Sparks app, we push notifications out that way. I think of more maybe the, you know, I'm an employee of the of Bob Catrino, just using you guys for example, since you're here. You know, if I'm an employee, I'm showing on the janitor, and I want to sign up for these notifications when it's two in the morning. And, you know, the audible alarm, that's great, but if I'm with my headphones on, maybe if there's a way to get notification, I don't know, there's if that's, I'm sure there's a way, I just don't know if that's practical for us to include, but that would be an awesome option, I think, to add in, as well as maybe using that to notify for meetings or other information that, I don't know, still that as an idea possibly. But I I supported the postponing this, and we got to get it right, we got one chance to do it.
Okay. Is that clear as mud?
Mayor, if I if I could.
Yes, sir.
We will take, review the tape from the hearing today, and do our best to capture the concern and comments of the city council and yourself, mayor, and propose mitigation measures based on the context of this meeting. One management of expectation I want to provide is that ultimately the conditions will come, if should the council choose to continue this item today, the conditions will come back the same as they are today in your staff report, but we will have another component of the staff report that outlines capturing what we tried to do today. Is keep in mind, it was approved by the planning commission and recommended as it was seen today. So we will come up with a presentation approach and a staff report approach that captures some of these comments. But you will also see the conditions the same as today. I just want you to understand why that would be the case, because they haven't initially been changed by the council yet. So as you review that staff report in the upcoming weeks, you'll understand, maybe you'll understand that that approach. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so we're going to look for a motion to continue this to the first December meeting. Is that enough time for you guys?
Mayor, I had proposed to the clerk the December ninth, 2024 meeting. There's concern as Assistant Manager Martini just identified with with the considerations that are in front of us and the timing of staff reports due and not wanting to turn one in late, potentially the best approach to direct the staff is to the January. Yes, thank you. The January, is it fourteenth, city council meeting?
I don't know when.
The first January.
I don't look that far ahead.
Yes. Thank you.
I mean, is that too long of a delay for the applicant?
Of course. I just want to provide, Mayor, it's to the council's discretion, and I appreciate asking the applicant, but we will have to, we will be coordinating with the applicant, we'll probably be coordinating with some of the public, and we will have to still generate a staff report. And I would hate for us to ask for a second continuance at the December meeting, but I appreciate you asking the applicant.
Thank you.
Yes.
Come on up.
Want you to answer the question, how do we ask from a business standpoint?
From a business standpoint, for Thatcher, any delay is, it does impact us. This has been a very long process for us. We started this application process in January. So it is disappointing from our side to have more delays. On the other hand, we do want to get this right, and we want to do our part to help you guys.
Just out of out of question, this is for staff as well as the council and and city manager. I understand the timeframes on getting staff report done and when they have to be reviewed, but these will be additional conditions. And I'm just wondering if we can get your indulgence, staff's indulgence, management's indulgence. Is it possible to bring this forward with the understanding in the staff report that these were the areas of concern, these will be addressed in terms of recommended conditions that may come after the normal staff report date to try and keep us in the in the December realm? Because the November realm wouldn't work, well, that's not very far off, but December realm is one.
That's our problem is, we have, we have two, what, three fifths of our council is out on the second meeting in November.
Oh, yeah, but I'm wondering if we if we could look at that first meeting in November, because we know what the project is.
Staff is saying probably not enough time for them.
December.
December, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, in the December meeting. Sorry, John. But the thought is, we know, we know what the base conditions are, we know what the concerns, I wrote them down, and which council member identified them. So that that some additional condition language would come after that staff report gets initially submitted for for review. I know that they take a long time to look through, make sure that everything's right. I don't know if there's a possibility to do that, but we would appreciate your your thought and indulgence on that.
You want to talk about this, John? We want to get it right, is what we want to do.
With John Martini, your Assistant City Manager, with all due respect to Thatcher and their consultant, there were a lot of things thrown around today and a lot of ideas. It will take staff a while, as Jim said, to go through the tape. We want to bring it back to the council and you, Mr. Mayor, in a complete form. To Mr. Snell Groves' question, we cannot submit a staff report without the amended conditions for your review ahead of the council meeting. So I think it's best, that's why I came up and recommended to Jim that we put this out to January, so we get it right and the council can take full consideration in one meeting without a second continuance.
Anything to add, Mr. City Manager?
No, I think what what John said is is correct. I mean, we can make every effort to try to go quicker than that, but I would prefer we be accurate here on this one versus rush, and we really want to give it due consideration.
All right. So I guess we're going to look for a motion from the council. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, I move to continue, PCN 03061 dash CU 24 dash 0010 to the January 13, 2025 city council meeting.
Mr. Abbott.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Be none, please vote. Motion carries.
Aye.
We're missing somebody.
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence, too. All right, let's move on to comments from the public. Any in the public wishing to speak? To none, I'll bring it back. Yes. Come on down.
For the record, Brad Spencer, Mr. Mayor, council members and others. Interesting to listen in here, so we appreciate you taking a step back. And again, we want right. You know, our people are there, our structure, our property, and we do want right. And there's one key word that's been kind of floating through here in the background, and it's, you know, this has to be developed. We have to find this process, we have to develop that process. Develop is not an action word. When this program is being put together, we need to have you and everybody aware what is going to happen. If we have to develop something over the next two years, that may be too late. And the one last final thing here is in the letter dated December 22nd, is the question's not why, or how, or what, but when. So, and for the best, and hopefully we have that exactly. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in the public wishing to speak? All right, we'll bring it back to the council. Announcements from the mayor, city council, city manager, Mr. Manager, council.
Nothing, nothing's happening, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone on the council? Abbott, Mr. Abbott?
I do, real quick, there's a lot of good, well-dressed people today, but I want to give a shout out to Bill Wagner, Sparks Nevada sweater that he has on, looking good, my friend.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, then with that, we're going to get to my favorite subject, we're adjourned.
Okay, don't go anywhere, everybody.
Yep.
I will give you a minute, I'll be when you're ready.
Yeah, we, she fixed it.
Ready? Ready? Okay.
Like to call to order the meeting, the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, October 28th, 2024, with a roll call. Chairperson Byby.
Here.
Agency members Lawson.
Here.
Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Chief Legal Officer Duncan.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Lawson.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item 3.1, public comment, do I have any public comment? Seeing none, we will close 3.1. Item 4.1, approval of the agenda, looking for a motion to approve, agency member Dare.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Agency member Abbott.
I can.
I motion a second, any discussion? If not, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 5.1, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting for September 23rd, 2024. Do I have a motion for any corrections to the minutes or a motion to approve? Agency member Anderson.
Move to approve the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting for September 23rd, 2024.
Thank you, agency member Vanderwell.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Not please vote, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 6.1, consideration, possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of September 11th, 2024 through October 15th, 2024. Looking for a motion to approve? Still looking for a motion? Agency member Abbott.
I move to accept the report of claims and bills and appropriation transfers for the period of September 11th, 2024 through October 15th, 2024.
Thank you. Did I already call in agency member Anderson to second?
Second.
Okay, I'm jumping ahead of myself. Sorry, I was voting. Okay, a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item 8.1, comments from the public, any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll close 8.1. Announcements from the agency and chief administrative officer, Mr. Manager, anybody in the agency? Seeing none, we'll close 8.2. And my favorite motion, we are adjourned.